Welcome to the Thurston County Board of Health Special Meeting Work Session for Wednesday, June 23, 2021, 3:12 PM. My name is Ty Manzur, Chair of the Board of Health. Vice Chair, Commissioner Carolina Mejias, to my right, and Commissioner Carrie Edwards is present as well. County Manager, Amero Chavez, Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis, and on our Zoom we have host of folks from Public Health, Director Shelley Slaughter, Environmental Health Director Art Starry, we have Steve Peterson, and it looks like, sorry guys, my eyes are bad, Jane Mountjoy Benney, right? Great, okay, from Public Health and Environmental Services, Health Division. We are, topic today is On-Site Sewage Management Plan. Kind of follow-up to follow-up to follow-up, we've been working through various aspects of this issue. We're slated here till four, so we'll see how far we can get. And I guess I'll turn it directly to Shelley. As our Board of Health Administrator. Shelley, can you hear me? There you are. You're muted, but I see you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, I apologize, I just lost connection. Here at the SCPSC vaccine site, and I'm going to pass this briefing straight on to our environmental.
Sounds like it's going to Art. Sounds like it's going to Art, so Art, thank you Shelley, take it away, Art.
Okay, so good afternoon again, I'm Art Starry, the Environmental Health Division Director. And as instruments are indicated, this is a follow-up to the last Septic System Management Program briefing, which was in May, which follows up other ones. And so, congratulations Commissioner Mejia, this is your third Septic System briefing, and you've only been here six months, so you're making good progress. So all I'll do is go through some slides that I prepared, and as is usually the case, when I re-review them, I find mistakes, so I will see a few that have some corrections on that, so I apologize. But we'll go through those and brush through the material that we reviewed previously, and then there's some new materials that were in the packet and in the slides that I hope can help us move ahead, that talk about what some other counties are doing, how they've funded some of their programs, some of the activities they're doing. And then if we wanted to talk a bit about what a hybrid might look like, we kind of left that off last time, where what would a hybrid look like? When I talked to Steve and Jane and some of our staff, there's some things that we think would be important that if we wanted to try to advance our programs, that we would try to accomplish, so. It's a bit of a preview, so I will share my screen here. And there we go. So what we've got now, let me look at this a little differently. So I hope everybody can see that, is it there?
Yes.
Yep, alright.
So, get through the title page here. So just a quick review of how we're doing in the world of Septic System Monitoring and Maintenance in Thurston County. We've got about fifty-seven, or fifty-four thousand Septic Systems. About seventy-two percent of them, or almost thirty-nine thousand of them, are kind of operating on their own. They're, we don't really do much in the way of sending reminders or anything to them. They often get maintained when they sell or transfer. So that's the vast majority of Septic Systems in Thurston County. And then there's about fifteen thousand of them, most of them there are in Henderson and Esquali, the watershed areas there, that have renewable operational certificates. And then in addition to Henderson and Esquali, there's large and complex Septic Systems that have renewable permits or renewable operational certificates, that's the term that we call it. And here's the table we've seen before that talks about the different types of activities and the work that we do for the Septic Systems within those different areas. So you can see that, again, the column on the left, Henderson and Esquali, we have renewable certificates, we conduct dye tracing, we send reminders, we have lots of classes. We work really, really hard on that, it costs, takes quite a bit of staff time and a lot of resources to do that, but we get very good results. About ninety percent of the Septic Systems in the Henderson and Esquali area have current inspections, which, as I mentioned before, we're very pleased with this, as it's probably the highest rate for a big area in the state. Our other more complex permits, that are complex systems that have renewable certificates, a similar rate of current inspections, about eighty-seven percent. You can see that we don't have quite as many activities that we're doing on those. And we talked a bit about a special grant that we received, and where we focused efforts in the El watershed and a few other areas to try to encourage people to monitor and maintain their systems. There's no regulatory requirement to do it, we were just reminding them of what is in state law, told them where their, where systems were last maintained, offered some incentives. In doing that work, we got them up to about thirty-eight percent of the people had current inspections, so not nearly as good as Henderson and Esquali. And when you compare that to just the rest of the county, we're about thirty-five percent. You can see the numbers there. And just again, some graphics that I, that are different colors this time, that can reiterate the same thing. So if you like pie charts, here's the information in pie charts. On El Inlet, there were some questions, last time we had a slide that, you know, thirty-five percent, thirty-eight percent. I dug through our information and found that in El watershed, after that intensive education and outreach effort, that's got us up to thirty-eight percent. Again, as compared overall, as a pair to the folks that have renewable operational certificates in El Inlet, eighty-six percent of those people have current inspections, or those Septic Systems have current inspections, so. Kind of similar to what we're seeing the rest of the county. And here's a slide that talks about how things changed overall within the county over the past three years or four years, this is the last time we have really good complete data that we could dig up, that due to a variety of things, the number of systems or percentage of systems that have current inspections have increased, but we're still nothing like what we're seeing in Henderson and Esquali. Or the ones that have the renewable certificates. And then here's some different new information, at least one information I didn't share last time, or we didn't share last time, was what percentage of people were responding to the mailers and workshops and things that we had, and actually then doing the recommended maintenance for their Septic Systems, about eighteen percent of the people that were delinquent, in other words, they hadn't had their systems inspected for three years prior to receiving a notice. About eighteen percent of those people took the steps necessary to maintain their systems. They typically, they would have hired a professional to do that, although we also offered the opportunity for them to take classes with us, so. So it didn't move the bar a lot, but we wanted to test that really carefully, because that's always been a question for, for, or that we've received many times, is about how much, how much can we gain by using really good education and outreach efforts as opposed to having a more regulatory program? So we were able to make some improvements, but not quite the same as the Henderson and Esquali program. Well, not nearly the same, actually. So what this chart shows is the different elements of the On-Site Sewage Management Plan, the one that was proposed, and two, that actually was adopted in 2016, but which hasn't been fully implemented because of lack of funding. And what was then proposed when the Board adopted a ten-dollar annual charge that would be placed on the property tax statement to fund our On-Site Program, and the Septic System Monitoring and Maintenance Program. And you can see that, we talked a bit about this last time, that originally the Board proposed a flat charge for all Septic Systems within Thurston County, that everybody would be charged the same regardless of where they were located. And that would be used to fund the program that would do the sorts of work that, well, Henderson and Esquali would have been maintained, we would have eventually increased the areas where there were heightened monitoring and maintenance requirements, starting with El Inlet and Summit Lake, and continuing doing a better job of education and outreach, following up on monitoring and maintenance reports that showed deficiencies, or pumping reports that showed deficiencies. You can see the whole list of things there, including pollution identification and correction monitoring. Now, that's where we're, we would be monitoring surface waters, lakes, streams, marine shorelines, to see if there are areas where water quality was being impaired, and then look to see if Septic Systems were contributing to that, and then seeking correction as necessary for that. So you can see the first two columns, the original plan, and then the one that had a tiered charge program, they would accomplish the same thing, it's just that the tiered charges would charge more for the marine areas and less for the rural county. And you can see the, the second to the last row on the chart shows the original proposal from 2016. And then I estimated what they would be now, just taking into account inflation. And so there's been about a twelve percent inflation due to the Consumer Price Index increases since 2016. And so the charges on the last, in the last row show what they would, would be. And then also the ten-dollar charge would, would increase. And you could see that, or you can see that the last column that shows what the ten-dollar charge program would, would entail is it would really focus on making sure that the monitoring and maintenance reports for all the Septic Systems that we received are being followed up on, when, if a pumper says they're surfacing sewage, or sewage is backing up in the house, or that there's some other significant problem, we could follow up on that. Would also entail sending reminders to everybody in the county to try to let them know when they need to maintain their systems and what they need to do, and then doing enhanced education and outreach for them. And the basis for this program was to charge all Septic System owners except the ones in Henderson and Esquali. So again, everybody except Henderson and Esquali, a ten-dollar per year charge to fund these programs.
Art Rivera wants to jump in.
Oh, feel free, sorry, I didn't, can't see it, I've got little screen now.
We've been holding questions, so this is the first one.
Okay. So this is just on this chart, Art. Correct me if I'm wrong, but at some point you had another column. Since the ten-dollar fee was stopped in 2017, there's some elements of the plan you, you and your staff have implemented, right?
So, so we've done some of the things, and we're doing it as grants allow. So for instance, we've implemented, and you've seen this little red dot thing? So the pollution identification elements, we've done some of that in key areas, such as the Henderson watershed, the Dobbs Creek work that we've talked about before, where we've found water quality problems, are now working with that community to see if we can find a solution for the Septic Systems that are having problems. The time of transfer program has come into play. That was implemented, actually, the fir, when the first plan was implemented. The dye tracing work, of course, we're doing that within Henderson and Esquali. We're doing education and outreach as we can, like I mentioned before, with the El Inlet watershed, where, and some other areas where we've boosted our efforts. So we're attempting to do them as we can, we do not have sustained funding for most of those activities that we've implemented. We are, again, we have ideas as far as where we would want to go forward if we had enhanced programs. Those were recommended in the 2016 plan, so those sorts of things have gone forward. Is that what you were thinking of?
I guess what I was thinking, that perhaps another column may be added to this chart. Because here is, what you have is the 2016 OSS plan, then you have the tiered charges, then you have the ten-dollar fee, which is stopped in 2017. If something else has happened without the ten dollars fee, I think it would be good to add this column, and another column, what is through grants or anything else, but something, some portions of the plan have been implemented since then. And I guess another column will be needed.
Okay, so we can, we can certainly do that and highlight those things, because we haven't stood still, we just aren't moving forward as quickly as we'd like. And as you know, the grant process can be pretty cumbersome. I mean, if you'd like, I'm sure Jane could talk about some of the highlights of things we're doing. Again, we probably have, over the next year, two years, I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars of grant funding, or eight hundred and something thousand, I can't keep my numbers straight, that are paying for the work up in Henderson and Esquali for Dobbs, Dobbs Creek, the education and outreach efforts we're doing for El and other watershed areas, and there's other programs as well.
Yeah, we have funding for all of our shellfish growing areas, both to do PIC work, the pollution identification correction work, and some enhanced education and outreach for the Septic work. We've, we've been a little slow to get going on some of those grants, because we haven't been able to get people hired, but we're, we're working on that, and hopefully it'll be getting going soon. It is for a short time period, it goes through the end of next year.
The county manager said it's been stopped in 2017, that ten-dollar fee. I didn't know it ever got started.
It was, it never, we never collected anything, the way the program was set up with.
It never did get going. And then my follow-up question though to that is, on page seven and eight, referring to those two, how does your inspection process in time and transfer bring those numbers around? Because we require that, that takes place about every six or seven years, and I don't know, maybe less now the way with the hot real estate market is, I really don't know. So how does that pencil into that chart?
So.
You require compliance there.
Right, so that, it does, I think that's part of the reason that we're seeing the numbers increase a little bit, although we can't, I can't show you one for one. But as you're correct, that there are a lot of homes that are being sold or transferred, and when that happens, they typically have the On-Site Systems inspected, and that helps bring the numbers up, so it's had an impact. It's hard to, we haven't done the study to say exactly what percentage of this is due to the time of transfer or not.
Okay, but it's, it's substantial, because if it's every six, every six or seven years, and that means, you know, one out of six or seven houses every year. Granted, it's not the one in three years, like required, I guess, but you do have a chart there that talks about some that are done in six years.
So we're, that was getting to the, trying to find out whether, again, at what frequency they are being maintained, that's why we got the, the signal, the data for six years and for three years.
Okay, okay, that's good, thank you, okay, keep going, Art.
And just to let you know, and here's the map that shows where the tiered areas were laid out, so. So one thing that, some questions that have come up, and some information I was able to dig up, was to try to identify what other counties in Western Washington are doing. As it turns out, Clark County has a program, and also Puget Sound Counties. And so here's a quick table that describes what the different programs are doing, and, and you can, the column on the left, it tinkered with the wording a little bit, so it's slightly different than what you saw, but. We have everything from Plowton County that receives about a hundred thousand dollars a year of general fund money to help with their monitoring and maintenance programs, to do education and outreach, to several, I believe it's seven, that use a charge on the property tax statement to fund their program or their pollution identification and correction efforts. And, and the nature and the scope of the programs varies between jurisdictions. You can see this, Mason County, for instance, they just adopted this a month ago, the five dollar and six cent charge per On-Site System to help identify, or help maintain their program, to Clark, I mean Kitsap County, they use theirs for pollution identification and correction. They, that's part of a hundred and fifteen, they receive about one point two five million dollars a year out of stormwater fees to help fund their PIC program. Jefferson County, a few years ago, adopted a program to, to charge all Septic System owners, what started out as a thirty-four dollar per system per year charge, and they replaced, I guess, the renewal or the pumper reports and other things, the fees that they were charging. So they focus on making sure that they can provide information to people to monitor and maintain their systems and follow up on delinquencies and other problems. They don't, they don't have a renewable permit system quite like us, but there's a lot of, some similar activities. And you can see there's other ones, so Wacom County was actually the first county down here at the bottom to implement, in the Puget Sound region, I should say, implement a property tax charge for implementing their Septic System Management Plan. And the little notes here indicate what legal authority they used to set up their program. So if it's OSS, that means that there's a law that allows you to charge to implement your On-Site Plan. There's a stormwater authority that, that some county, that counties can use that will allow them to do things like pollution identification and correction. Pierce County, just what they do is they charge quite a bit more than we do for each Septic System report that they receive to run a lot of the elements of their program. And then others have a shellfish district, so that's the, the authority that we're using for Henderson and Esquali, but it doesn't, it has some, some benefits and limitations, but that's what Skagit County is doing, and that's actually what Mason County did, was they combined all of their shellfish protection districts into one, and they have a single charge now that's helping fund activities for the, for the whole county, basically.
What does that mean under Pierce, where it says pump report?
So what happens is each time a Septic Tank Pumper turns in a report for, well, every time a Septic Tank Pumper pumps a Septic Tank, can I get pumper and tank anymore in a phrase, they have to turn in a report, and there's a forty-five dollar charge for that. That's all, and they manage that electronically, we have the same thing, but we charge less, because we're not funding the same, we're not using it as a primary funding source for our programs.
What do you charge?
We're fifteen dollars, is that correct? I got head nods. And then the, it's actually, there's two dollars more that get charged, because the vendor that we use for that program, it's kind of like a credit card charge. They have, they charge a two-dollar administrative fee.
So if I'm a pump, Septic Pumper, I just add fifteen dollars to my bill, collect it from the citizen, and then I pay it to the county when I file that report?
That's, that's what happens, and they actually, they don't, they don't really like that because of some of the tax implications, but they do that.
Okay. Are, are we having, have we had any changes? I'll go back to sixteen, seventeen, somewhere in there, it became apparent that we're trying to fix something, and about one-half, one percent of the Septic Systems were in need of repair. Do you have any new numbers that show that that's not correct today? Is there something new going on?
So, I didn't, didn't rerun the numbers for the failure rates and what we're finding with our dye tracing, but the last slides that we prepared showed that.
Okay.
And it's not surprising that when you do inspections and do the thorough dye tracing, the second time around, you won't find as many failures. A lot of systems, I think you might be referring to some information in one of the reports that talked about, when we did some shoreline surveys, the failure rates were up to seventeen percent. Well, the second time you went through, it was less, and then that, that's much less, I mean, that's a much bigger number than the number of repair permits, when you extrapolate that for the number of systems, so. I don't have twenty-twenty-one data, we could, we could work with Joel, who's our database guy, to get that information, but they don't have it today.
But nothing glaring right now, okay.
I would also add, if I may, those numbers that we had before from Joel were kind of based on, on repair permits that had been taken out. So that, that was the big failures that people then took steps to repair. We're also now taking a harder look at some of the deficient reports that come in when, when the pumppers make their, their Septic Reports. And we're finding a lot of things that, that sure look like failures, and we're not finding the, the accompanying repair permit or replacement permit. So that has us worried that there's, there's deficiencies that are out there that aren't being followed up on as they should be. So that, that number's always going to be a little bit squirrely, because it's not what you're looking at.
I would hate to impose monetary penalties on the taxpayers based on a maybe, though. If you're gonna talk about that, we ought to get it nailed down, I guess.
What is this slide? Who just put that slide up, and can you?
Yeah, so this was one, there's some numbers that was in the packet, I didn't put this in your slide packet, but it struck me it might be useful, so I, I had it ready. And we did have this last time, and it shows, this is data from 2018. I received some questions from folks asking about the timeframe for this. So in 2018, we had a good data set, and so of the eighteen thousand or so inspections that were done by On-Site Professionals, this would be pumppers or monitoring specialists, eighty-two percent of them, eighty-two and a half percent didn't have any issues. Nine percent had small deficiencies, Jane could talk a bit about what those are. Eight and a half percent, or fifteen hundred and forty-two, had major deficiencies. So that could be everything from sewage backing up on the home to, you know, major component.
They, they were required to fix those because it was time of transfer, right?
These were, these could be all sorts of things, from someone like me, who just had my Septic Tank Pumped, and I, my pumper had to turn it in, to someone who had to do a time of transfer. So there's a fair number of these that have not been, we don't know if they've been repaired.
So I have, go ahead. Go ahead, finish, Art.
So those are the numbers that we have from 2018. And again, if you want more details on some of these.
Keep that up for a minute, because I think Commissioner Mejia and I both have questions about it.
So why is, if the Septic System Inspection results, like, why don't we have anything more recent? If we're still, if we're still doing the charging currently, where we're charging fifty dollars for, you know, these people to go, you know, whenever a citizen has a problem, they call a pumper, what's it called, what are they, Septic Pumper? You know, why don't we have anything more recent?
We, we do have more recent numbers, we wanted to look at the numbers prior to COVID, because we thought that would be more representative. We.
Probably had more inspections. Probably had a lot more inspections that year, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Right, we expect that many people didn't do, you know, do the maintenance over the course of the COVID epidemic for a variety of reasons. So we thought this would be a better, a better number.
I would differ that, I mean, there were more people at, at home, and they were flushing much more, so.
I can say that the, these numbers are more, the stuff that Commissioner Edwards I can say that the the these numbers are more, the the stuff that Commissioner Edwards and I were kind of sparring over twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen were from like twenty sixteen or something. So this actually is a little bit of an update. But I guess Art, let me just make sure, because we've gone through that and I this, when I look at this, when I look at these numbers, it looks to me a little less better, so to speak, less than um what we originally had for the marine for the original shellfish protection area dye tracing, which I think was like fourteen to seventeen percent failure rate. And then, but it does look quite a bit worse than the contention that, well, only a half percent were doing repair certificates. So let's just go with that number. I mean, this this is a little closer to the former than the latter, although it's somewhere in the middle. Is that, am I reading that, interpreting that right, or am I missing something?
That that's how I would look. Well, Jane's giving you giving me a look. It's one advantage of these Zoom things, I can look at four people's faces at once. But um but I think there we are seeing, so again, there's seventeen percent or so of the systems that are having some sort of deficient, some sort of deficiency. And you're and I think that again, if we were to dye trace or when we've dye traced things like Henderson the second time, the numbers are much lower. In the neighborhood, just a few percent have have significant problems. So I think this is indicative of kind of what you're describing is that if you just look at all the septic systems that are out there, um you know, there's, you know, more about ten, well, seventeen percent of them are having some sort of issues that need some sort of follow up.
Okay, even if we throw out the s- the smalls, we've got eight and a half percent that are pretty pretty big.
Yes, eight and a half percent is something significant. And and probably, I think, Steve and Jane might say that again, these are things being reported. I know a lot of pumpers feel um hesitant to put a lot of bad information on their reports because they might be affecting their um financial or re- a relationship with their their contract or their customer. They might tell them one thing and put something a little bit different on the reports, but but I, but these are the good numbers that we have.
Okay.
Well, and I I would also point out that this is based on the the number of inspections, which is not the total number of systems. So we know something about these systems that got inspected. There's still, uh you know, that's eighteen thousand. There's a whole bunch of systems that that didn't get inspected um that that year. And we know across the county, over the course of three, three to six years, we have about fifty percent of the systems that get inspected at all. So there's still a great unknown about about that other half of the systems.
Uh yeah, I guess you'd probably suspect that the people getting inspections are the people likely to get are the half of the population that tends to get inspections and keep up on things versus the half that's not.
I think it's the folks who are, you know, selling homes and um and then there are the, again, a lot of folks who are just on top of it. And so
Okay.
Probably some bias to that sample set.
Let's go on to twelve.
Yeah, so slide twelve. So a bit, last time we talked a bit about what what a hybrid program or what some additional elements of a program might be. Um and so these are the things uh we put down. Um so again, we could continue to have sustained fund or try to provide sustained funding to uh expand education and outreach to reach all septic system owners. Again, right now, uh it's either grants or special funding through the charges for Henderson and Nisqually that that allow us to do that. We could try to do a better job of following through on those reports that we just talked about to make sure that the the problems that are found are being evaluated and that if there are problems, they're being fixed. Um frankly, we're concerned that we're not not able to follow up on all those. Again, the ones that come in through operational certificates. And time of transfers typically get solved, but there's a whole bunch of those that are not related to either of those activities. And we don't right now have the capacity to follow up on them the way we should or would like. We'd like to be able to con- you know, another good thing would be to continue or provide sustained funding for water quality investigation. So that's that pollution identification and correction work. Uh we're focusing on a few areas now using grant funds. We have limited resources at Henderson and Nisqually. Uh we don't have countywide resources, and so that's that would be something that could work on. We could uh bridge that in with monitoring and maintenance work to identify hotspots and perhaps identify communities where there are issues. Um again, how to to work with them. Another thing would be to try to assure that uh septic systems in high-risk areas such as shorelines are properly monitored and maintained.
How you coming to that campground area, Art?
Excuse me?
How you coming to that campground area?
Uh Jane can give you a quick update if you'd like. We just talked about that before this meeting.
You wrote that now or at the end?
Let's go into the end. I'm interested in this slide.
And then we could do, you know, try to enhance our efforts to identify failures in high-risk areas. So we mentioned shorelines here specifically. Uh there are other high-risk areas, perhaps. Um we've talked about um groundwater vulnerable areas of this is just an idea. We didn't define it very carefully, just to put have as a talking point. Um so here's a table that describes some of those and some rough ideas as to what it might cost.
Can you, wait, before you move on that slide, Art, on number twelve. Um you know, I know that number four bullet point there. Um that would be, the goal of that would be to protect surface water. And is there is there a reason to to focus on, I mean, are surface waters more vulnerable to septic failure? Are they more? Is there a reason to focus on that ver- versus, I know with if, I know, I know we've got our shellfish protection districts, but those those get wrapped up in the economy and the culture of of shellfish, you know, but if if you're on another surface water that's doesn't have shellfish involved, is there a reason to focus on that? Is it more vulnerable than groundwater sources or other things that we care about environmentally uh in terms of where we would focus effort?
So uh I think some of the reasons we might look at shorelines, um especially like lakes, you know, Summit Lake would be a a good example of that. If we have a failing onsite system there, uh and people drink it, or for that matter, a lake where there's a lot of recreational activities, a failing onsite system has the potential to um put bacteria in the water and cause illnesses. Or the other thing that we're hearing a lot about, and you've seen emails about this from some lake owners is uh lake property owners or lake area residences, uh you know, failing onsite systems can release nutrients to surface waters, which can cause problems. And so there's um different reasons why other shorelines, um shoreline areas might be of of interest or in a focus. Uh you know, the probably the 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 biggest risk would be where someone, again, if onsite system is failing and people can consume the water directly or it contaminates something like shellfish where they can consume uh bacteria that have been basically concentrated by by clams and oysters and to eat them.
How about lawn fertilizer?
What?
Lawn fertilizer.
Um well, lawn fertilizer also nutrients, so that's one of the, that's the kind of vexing issue when you talk about lakes is there's well, most of these things, there's not just one pollution source, there's potentially lots. It could be, you know, pets, it could be lawn fertilizer, it could be agriculture, it could be, um who knows? Depending, you have to kind of look at the watershed and the land use activities within it to try to identify uh, you know, pollution sources and to work with uh work with that community to to solve problems if that's what you're intending to do. Uh so there's, yeah, it's it's complex. But so I put that here. The other thing is that, and it's really difficult. The, you know, septic systems, even though the high high-density septic systems within that are affecting groundwater, there's um unless you replace them with a higher treatment capability system or convert them to sewer, it's really a difficult challenge. Monitoring and maintenance, um other than making sure that people don't, you know, if they try to monitoring and maintenance doesn't doesn't eliminate nitrogen, which is one of the concerns that uh septic systems would have or septic's the one of the pollutants that septic systems release to groundwater, which can be a problem. And and as we're finding from some other studies that uh septic systems don't treat a lot of the pharmaceuticals and other things that get into water. So that it's, that's a tough kind of a tough nut to crack for an aquifer protection perspective. Um so sorry for babbling on there.
If if the board, um if if a county anywhere, I guess, was interested in protecting shoreline and surface water, would there be overlap between a policy like what, kind of what you've got in bullet four and the shoreline master program? Is that, is there any overlap there or connection?
Um I think there is as far as this, I'm not an expert on the shoreline master plan, but at least as far as its goals and things, I think there's consistency there. Um and also there's some things that overlap with stormwater and other things, um that um I mean, there's a real certainly a relationship when you're talking about the, you know, trying to make sure that activities within proximity of shorelines or are, you know, designed or or being conducted in a way to help protect the water resources of the shoreline area. But I am not a, I'm not a planning expert on that one.
Okay, very good. Keep going, sorry.
So here's a some ideas again for what um options might be. Uh and these are, these costs are very rough. Um I I just to give you an idea, and I, this last one, if we try to do something more complex, I'd have to do more analysis and work with our finance folks on that. But um so again, you could have something for relatively low cost that would be kind of replacing that what we were talking about. This is option one. Um for what was uh s- where the ten dollar charge, that's the sort of work that would have been done. And then um as Commissioner Edwards indicated, that was never implemented. But that was the in, the sort of work that would have been done at that time uh for a little bit more money if we were talking about uh a charge on all the the septic systems that aren't in Henderson, um in Nisqually. Um we could do a better job of doing pollution identification and and correction efforts. And then if we wanted to do more, if we wanted to try to um do more dye tracing on areas outside of Henderson and Nisqually and maybe have renewable operational certificates for for shoreline areas, and we'd have to find what a shore, what shoreline areas were interested in. Um those would cost more. And so, yeah, just some ideas for what what that might be. Um again, when talking to to staff, the um there's lots of things we think could enhance our program. But again, trying to work on this quality assurance work thing, did a better job of um have making education materials available and continuing to do pollution identification and correction so we can find where there are areas where and Commissioner Edwards mentioned this and others have, the to set it up in such a way that we aren't limited to just say, looking at areas where septic systems are. We'd want to have a little bit broader program, I think, and um and that might determine if if you chose to go down this path, uh what what legal mechanism you use for implementing the charge. But that's, those are legal questions. We don't probably don't have time, and I'm certainly not the right person to talk about all the nuances of that.
Okay, it's three fifty two. We've got a hard stop at four for two of the folks in this meeting.
Okay.
He is a.
Um I just have a question in regards to this hybrid program. I, if there's an annual charge, is there I mean, whenever septic pumpers go back, I mean, are they gonna get charged another fee on top of that for filing the report?
So right now, the way this is set up, th- this does not, this would not replace that pumper's reporting charge. Now, that was actually something that was intended with these plans, is they would have eliminated all those additional charges. So the and but um again, the the community, uh at least a lot of the community members didn't support that concept.
How do, Art, how does the um, so I've seen this chart, you have a couple iterations of it where it's got and I and I and I think I know where the chart comes from. It comes from the elements of the proposed septic man- management plan. But I'm trying to make, to figure out how that connects to the renewable operational certificate. You you, because you always start out with the with the pie charts, here's the percentage that have to file renewable certificates. And some of them have to do it because it's a large, complex system. Some of them have to do it because they're part of the special areas. But what, then when we get to this, the options, I don't see who's filing renewable operational certi- like if we go with hybrid option two or hybrid option one, does that change the percentage of who has to file these renewable operational certificates, or is that a different thing?
That's a, so and I, now that you've mentioned that, I didn't design this chart probably the right way to describe that. But the those, under these two options, the folks who have re- the complex and large systems would continue to have those. Um those renewable re- those renewable certificates would need to continue to pay that. So they uh they would again have that responsibility. And then down here, the question would be is, you know, how would we want to, would we want to uh for instance, if we have larger areas where they have renewable operational certificates, so like more shoreline areas, how would we want to incor- incorporate that? Um from staff's perspective, if we were able to um charge that via the property tax statement and eliminate some of these other time of um or charges that when people are applying for um uh or sending in the information for the re- uh to renew their certificate, that would be um preferential, but we don't know, yeah, that would, that's something where the board chooses to expand programs. Then we would need to work out the details of that.
Okay.
Sorry, does that answer your question, or do I need to try again?
Well, I guess, you know, um if just going back to the beginning, if, let's say I've got a large, complex system. And I've got, I'm in the pie chart that says I've got to do the ROC. What exactly does that mean? That means that I'm, what what am I filing with the county? Or what what are my, what's my checklist averted to meet that obligation? Is it just filing a septic so- a pump inspection report, or are there more elements to a, what what gives me a valid renewable operational certificate?
You want me to do that?
Yeah, you or uh Steve or Jane would be best.
Yeah, so if if you are, i- i- if you live out in um Rainier and you have a complex system, then you need to renew your operational certificate. You need to have it inspected by a a septic professional um who's certified for your type of system. And and many people can do most types of systems. And then that report gets turned into the county. We review it. If there's any deficiencies, then we require that you take care of those deficiencies to ensure that the the septic system is working properly. Um when you, when you are living somewhere besides Henderson and Nisqually, you also then have to pay the county a fee to renew your operational certificate. Right now, that fee is a hundred and fifty five dollars.
Every three years.
Depending on your system, some systems need to be renewed every three years, some need to be renewed every year. Um and so it's the same fee, a hundred and fifty five dollars to renew that. If you are in Henderson and Nisqually, you have a charge on your property statement, property tax statement. And you need to have a, have your system inspected. If your system is a pretty basic system, you can take our class and be certified to do that inspection yourself. Um elsewhere in the county, that's less of an option. So they don't pay an additional fee, except that they've already done it on the property tax statement. Again, if there's, if there's some problem, they have to take care of it. If you live somewhere in the county and you don't have an operational certificate, we sure encourage you and state law says you should have it inspected, um you know, pretty much every year, every three years. But we don't follow up very much. And so if you have deficiencies, we would like to be able to say, hey, it looks like this pump report says that your system is failing and you've got surfacing sewage, you you need to take care of that. But we maybe aren't doing that to the extent that we should be.
You also get beat up by your wife if you have that situation.
Yeah, and there are.
By experience?
Depending upon the system type, then we'll have very, might have very specific requirements, depending on what brand it is and whether it has to have monitoring or not. They might have water quality monitoring. And so they do get a fairly specific list of things that they need to evaluate.
Okay, county manager's telling me we're out of time. I would like the follow-up to just jump right to this uh you know, uh slides, back to slides uh twelve and thirteen and to kind of finish this up uh on a follow-up.
I'd be happy to do that. Sorry, it took so long to get through through the first thirteen.
No, it's okay. We were a little late getting started. And as I've said many times, one hour is not enough for seven minutes, so. We'll um we'll see you guys next time around. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Hey, Art?
Yes.
Who did you, did you replace Klingman?